That's right.
S.R. Ripley, y'all gonna be electing the vice mayor.
I'm sure.
You still saying?
Yeah, the chairman board is the chairman.
Let's do S.R. Ripley.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're not on yet. Just want to say good evening to everyone. We're having a few technical difficulties, so we'll be starting a few minutes late. I'll let you all know. Mark is trying to get some things straight back in the radio room. Once again, good evening, everyone. To those of you who are viewing, Happy New Year to everyone. Meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Hood?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mayo?
Here.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
We have our invocation by Larry Campbell, Jr., followed by our pledge of allegiance. Ask everyone to please stand, please.
We all bow with heads, please. Father, we want to thank you for a brand-new year. We thank you for the city of Danville, the workers within our city, administration, the people. We pray for your blessings. We pray for bereaved hearts who have lost loved ones through the pandemic. We pray for families, pray for educational system. We pray that you will lead in God as in 2021. Bless our session tonight, as we shall make major decisions that will affect our people within our community. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, good evening to everyone and Happy New Year to those of you who we haven't been able to speak to. We have a proclamation. We will ask those to please come forward, Ms. Booth, and those who are representing. Good evening to you all and welcome. Whereas human trafficking is a nationwide public health and civil rights crisis, it is a criminal activity in which people profit from the control and exploitation of others, two forms of human trafficking are sex trafficking and labor trafficking. Human trafficking can occur anywhere within and across the United States of America and its borders, victimizing both U.S. citizens and non-citizens, both children and adults, and across all gender identities. And whereas its victims and survivors are everywhere, Virginia being no exception. For example, teenage girls living in the community around George Mason University have been approached by older men through social media and apps such as Tinder, Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, Snapchat, YOLO, and Lemon. And grooming has taken place by traffickers in Northern Virginia, Council for Foreign Relations by Guess Blogger for the Women Around the World, August 13, 2020. And whereas human trafficking has become a major lucrative crime in a pandemic-rocked world, the lockdown measures has created severe vulnerabilities for those most at risk, happened to create the next generation of human trafficking victims. With children and youth at home and isolated from school services, they are increasingly vulnerable to online predators. Council for Foreign Relations by Guess Blogger for the Women Around the World, August 13, 2020. And whereas a community, we must dedicate ourselves to protecting vulnerable members of our society. We have a moral obligation to work to prevent human trafficking and address its brutal destructive effects. And whereas if you are a victim of human trafficking or suspects and suspect someone you know is a victim, contact the National Human Trafficking Resource Centers at 1-888-373788. This is 24/7 toll-free hotline, and it can help. Now therefore, Alonzo Jones, Mayor, and members of the Danville City Council of the City of Danville, Virginia, do hereby proclaim January 2021 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in the city of Danville, given under my hand this fifth day of January 2021. You may come forward, and thank you all for what you do, and please feel free to give some remarks. Thank you all so much for what you do. Please feel free to give some remarks.
Good evening, everyone. As Executive Director at Haven of the Dan River Region, we thank you for-
You can pull your mask down if you want to, or get closer to that mic.
Closer. As Executive Director of Haven of the Dan River Region, I thank you for presenting this proclamation to us. Human trafficking has many intersections between domestic and sexual violence, and as we strive to exert our mission to eradicate domestic violence, sexual assault, as well as human trafficking, any type of victimization, we want to raise more awareness so that this problem can be, this horrible crime can be eradicated. So I thank you all again for hearing us today.
You've given a lot of information already in regards to social media. Could you say something to the parents who are watching in regards to how they can be more proactive with their young people with social media?
Yes. Make sure you monitor your children on social media at all times, no matter what age they are, they're living in your home, they are vulnerable to be victimized by someone behind the scenes. They don't know who they could be talking to at any time, so just keep that monitoring very strict.
You all again for the work that you all do. Thank you all so much. Thank you all.
Good evening.
Communications for visitors, citizens who desire to speak on matters not listed on the agenda may come forward at this time. Please state your name and your address for the record. Please feel free to come forward at this time. Good evening to you all and welcome.
Everyone, my name is Angela Williams. I'm here with Barry Martin. We are owners of Focus Point Mental Health located at 2321 Riverside Drive. I also have with me Ms. Coffey-Alexis. She is our program director, and we want to introduce a new program to the city of Danville. If I can have a few moments, I'd like to go over that program with you. The program is called PERLS, which stands for Programs to Encourage Active and Rewarding Lives. PERLS is a brief, community-based depression care management program. The program is person-centered and geared towards empowering people through behavioral techniques to actively manage depression and/or anxiety, primarily social anxiety during this COVID-19 pandemic. Currently, the primary focus is on COVID-19 and social anxiety. PERLS has been shown to significantly improve the participants' depressive symptoms and overall quality of life. PERLS has been evaluated and included in several national clearinghouses for evidence-based programs such as SAMSA, Administration for Community Living, and the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, just to name a few. PERLS has been implemented in over 50 sites and across 18 states. With Focus Point Mental Health now offering the program, Virginia is included in these studies. Target population will be ages 18 years of age or older. There is no income or insurance requirement, so that means whether you have private insurance, Medicaid, or no insurance at all, you would be eligible for this program. A couple of the sample questions that will be asked in order to qualify for the program would be things such as little interest or pleasure in doing things, given a ratio of zero to three, of course, zero being not at all or nearly every day, feeling down, sad, or hopeless with the same ratio of zero to three, trouble sleeping, meaning too much or even not enough. These are also all symptoms of social anxiety and depression related to COVID-19. PERLS is different from other programs because it is implemented based on telephonic or through telehealth services. It highlights problems that address things such as defining and reasonable goals, identifying possible social solutions, weighing the pros and cons of each solution, and then coming up with a feasible action plan. Some of the benefits of this program would be allowing the participants to feel more in control over the care that they receive, the stigma of actually going into a therapist's office. It limits the challenge of transportation or even having the proper clothing to get to those appointments and be able to be seen in a social setting. The sessions will be five to eight, 50-minute sessions, done over six to eight months timeframe so that the participants do not feel overwhelmed. This is a one-time opportunity for those participants to enable them to come into services, receive services that they may not normally be participating in, such as psychosocial rehabilitation, mental health skill building, crisis stabilization, SEOP, which is a substance abuse program, OPT, which is outpatient therapy, all of which are provided within the Danville community, and all of those programs are provided at Focus Point Mental Health currently. So what that means for the people of Danville is that these participants that, again, either don't have Medicaid, have private insurance, or have no insurance at all, will now be able to receive, excuse me, my mask keeps slipping, will now be able to receive services geared towards their depression, anxiety, or social anxiety, whether it relates to COVID-19 or something that they've previously already been suffering from. Now they can get the help that they need, and it won't be based on their insurance. Again, Ms. Coffey-Alexis will be providing or overseeing this program. We are at 2321 Riverside Drive in Danville. That's in the old Riverside building in the rear. The phone number, I'll let Ms. Coffey-Alexis give you the contact information, and we also have some flyers that will be available on our website, which is www.focuspointmh.com. And also, you can come by our office to get any additional information.
And the phone number for PERLS is the 434-483-5090.
And is there anything else you wanted to add? I will add before leaving, unless you have any questions for me, that we will also be hiring for this program. The qualifications right now is just that they have to be 25 years of age or older. We will offer training for those participants, and they would be able to apply with Ms. Coffey-Alexis as well at the Focus Point Building.
Again, thank you all so much for all what you're doing. I think you mentioned Mr. Martin is here. Any more of your staff is here, where they stand?
Mr. Martin is here. He's also co-owner, and Ms. Coffey, I'm sorry, Casey Cunningham, which is our administrative assistant.
Thank you all so much for what you all do. If you can, I think she's passing out papers. You said you don't have to have any insurance, no Medicaid. If people don't have any insurance, they're able to participate.
Correct.
And I think the telephone number, can you give that telephone number again? Or give it to me, I'll give it to you. What's that number again? If you're watching, 434-
483-
483-
5090-
5090. 434-483-5090. Again, thank you all so much for what you all doing for the community. Mr. Martin, thank you so much, sir. Thank you all. Anyone else who's still in communications, anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time, please. Once again, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. I'm Tommy Bennett, President of the Danville Branch NAACP. I would just like to say thank you to the city of Danville. The Danville Branch NAACP lost our oldest member, Mrs. Anna Visher Thorpe, was 112. She passed away on December 24th, and I would like to say thank you to the Danville Police Department, the Danville Fire Department, who helped provide a great birthday party for her on April 16th of this year, of last year. I would like to say thank you to the letter that we received from the mayor of Danville and the visit that we had from Councilman Saunders and all the telephone calls that we got, and I got a lot of replies from Councilman Mayo, Councilman Campbell, and Councilman Hood to say thank you. And I think she was a member of your church, Councilman Hood. Yes, from Trinity Baptist Church. And I have letters from the governor, the lieutenant governor, who paid her a visit and was visiting her through the window along with the mayor on July 3rd, when he was in the last time he was in the city of Danville. And it has been a great loss. Not only was she the oldest person in Virginia, but she was a lifetime member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And also, she was a lifetime member of NAACP. And on July the 3rd, when we opened my office on Harbrook Street, my desk and my chair, my very first piece of furniture in the office, was donated by Mrs. Thorpe. And so it was a great loss for the city, but to live and to be the oldest person in Virginia at 112, and also, I would just like to say thank you to the city and thank you to all our elected officials. I got letters from Senator Mark Warner, Senator Kane, Delegate Jay Jones, Lieutenant Governor Candidate Xavier Warren. We got just letters from all over the world congratulating and just to know, to her family, that Danville cared. And I think she had a proclamation that she had, under your leadership as mayor, you did a Mrs. Thorpe Day. So I would like to say thank you to the city of Danville. And on another sad note, we lost another member of our NAACP was Coach Dennis Saunders. So throughout this holiday, we have had some great loss, and I'd just like to say thank you to the city of Danville for all your participation in helping me with the loss of my last two members, a good member, Dennis, and the oldest, Mrs. Thorpe. Thank you.
Tommy, I think you may want to extend a thank you from, you and I were on the phone talking to the family in New York, and they wanted to make sure we extend a thank you from Danville from the aunt. Maybe you ought to take time to do that from their niece.
Yes, Mrs., her great-great niece is Dr. Adele Allen, and she couldn't make it due to COVID. She couldn't make it to the service, and myself and the members of NAACP took charge of making sure that her service, and it's online, and she was really, really pleased with everything because she couldn't make it here. And of course, being 112, all her family members in their 80s and 60s and 70s, and they just couldn't make it through this virus. So thank you so much because it was a hard job getting it all done, but we got it done with the help of the city of Danville. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're still in communications. Anyone who would like to communicate, speak on any items on the agenda may come forward at this time. We're still in communications. Anyone who would like to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Under Consent Agenda, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on any item on the consent agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on any item on the consent agenda may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Saunders.
Mayor of Approval, General Item B, C, D, Consent Agenda.
Is that second by Councilman Buckner, discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Under New Business Item A, Consideration of Rezoning 540 Woodland Drive from TR Threshold Residential to SR Sandy River Residential, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Please state your name and address for the record, and good evening to you, ma'am.
My name is Bonnie Gosney, and I'm here on this property, and if anyone has any questions, I'm here to answer.
Any questions? No questions. Thank you. We're still in public hearing. Anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance rezoning 540 Woodlawn Drive, parcel ID number 72449, also known as Grid 817, Block 1, Parcel Number 9 of the City of Danville zoning district map, parcel ID number 72474, also known as Grid 817, Block 1, Parcel Number 7 of the City of Danville zoning district map, and parcel ID number 72454, also known as Grid 818, Block 2, Parcel Number 1, from TR Threshold Residential to SR-R Sandy River Residential.
Second by Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Consideration of Rezoning 535 Woodland Drive from TR Threshold Residential to SR Sandy River Residential, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Anyone who wants to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance rezoning 535 Woodlawn Drive, parcel ID number 72457, also known as Grid 818, Block 2, Parcel Number 2, from TR Threshold Residential to SR-R Sandy River Residential.
Second by Councilman Campbell, discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Consideration of granting a special use permit at 280 Pawnee Forest Road, I open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. Please state your name and address for the record, and good evening to you all.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. Happy New Year. My name is Jeff Bond. I'm the owner of Solex Architecture located at 641 Main Street. With me, I have Jeff Smith with Danville Family Vet. Danville Family Vet is looking to add on a covered canopy to better serve their patrons for their extended pet stay services. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Jeff and Jeff. Any questions for Jeff and Jeff? Thank you all so much. We're still in public hearing. Anyone else who would like to speak on this agenda item may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve an ordinance granting a special use permit application 2020-258, a waiver of yard requirements, subject to the probation of parking and front yards in accordance with Article 3M, Section C21 of the Code of the City of Danville, Virginia, 1986, as amended, at 280 Pawnee Forest Road, Parcel Number 60550, also known as Grid 1706, Block 2, Parcel 4.1 of the City of Danville zoning district map.
Second by Councilman Vogler, discussion of the motion? Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Consideration of Accepting Parcel Number 56289 on Riverside Drive, Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution accepting a gift of certain real property on Riverside Drive to allow for flood control improvements.
Second by Councilman Buckner, discussion of the motion? Councilman Whittle. City staff, Councilman Whittle would like to hear a little bit about it, and then you have a question by Councilman Vogler. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mr. Dotson.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Councilman Whittle says he just wanted to hear a little bit more about it, and then Councilman Vogler has a question.
It's the outlet of the creek as it enters the Dan River on Riverside. It is on the riverside of Riverside, and it is largely already a flood, like flood control improvements. It's largely like rocks to prevent erosion, but I'm understanding, I think Public Works has been in talks with the owner about expanding the flood control improvements, and he's offered to donate it to us to allow us to do that. Can't speak to that. I know right now it is largely rocks to prevent erosion on the outlet as it goes into the river, but they may be able to expand it to allow for a retention pond. I can't really speak to that, but I do know Rick Drazinovich and Brian Donovan have been in talks with the owner about expansions out there.
Yeah, Madison got the jump on me, what I was primarily wanting to do, but for folks watching at home, I mean, we have a lot of information in our packet, but maybe for those who are watching who kind of want to have an understanding about the area that you're talking about, because I know flooding on Riverside Drive the last several years has certainly been a major concern to our citizens, and we've had several issues with it, so maybe kind of, again, kind of give folks an idea of the area you're talking about and maybe what they're looking at possibly doing to help with the situation.
Sure. So I guess, as you know, Riverside is sort of along the river. We have several, I guess creeks or tributaries that flow directly into the river that feed it. One is the Sandy Creek. Another is Apple Branch, which is where this is located. Apple Branch is sort of in the area of Bonner and Westwood, sort of where that crosses near Riverside Drive. And so I don't know if you've ever driven down the road and you maybe looked and you've seen like a large pile of rocks kind of flowing into the river. Now, that's along the stream bank, and that is to kind of prevent more erosion as the channel flows into the river. I think some of the goals might be to add vegetation or something that can hold more water in to prevent further erosion along there, and I guess to accommodate a little bit more water flowing into the river at any one time.
Thank you, and again, I'm glad that Rick and his team are taking steps to work with folks. I think anything we can do to help with the flooding issue, certainly along Riverside Drive, but maybe in some other places in the city, too, I'm glad to see we're taking those steps tonight.
Right, and this is just part of the overall expansion. I'm sure you've seen where they buried a bunch of caged rocks basically over there along that convenience store, so I think this is just further improvements to allow for more water retention.
Yeah, the once-in-a-lifetime storms seem to be happening just about every year now, so I don't think it's something that is going to be going away anytime soon, so I think it's something we're definitely going to have to deal with. I think it's something we're definitely going to have to deal with moving forward. Again, I'm glad we're, we're doing what we're doing tonight, and hopefully we'll continue to have discussions on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more, any more questions? Thank you so much. Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayo?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Aye.
Mr. Saunders?
Aye.
Mr. Vogler?
Aye.
Mr. Whittle?
Aye.
Mr. Buckner?
Aye.
Reverend Campbell?
Aye.
Mr. Hood?
Aye.
Mayor Jones?
Aye. Consideration of amending the fiscal year 2021 budget appropriation ordinance for litter control and recycling grant funds. Councilman Campbell.
Mayor, move adopt an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2021 budget appropriation ordinance to anticipate grant funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia for litter control and recycling efforts in the amount of $8,611 and appropriating the same.
Second by Councilman Buckner. First reading. Under communications, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of you at your desk have received or in front of you a T-shirt that was, includes the logo that was used during our, our, our attempt and our availability, our, our, our win for All America City. I wanted to let the public know that we do have these T-shirts available if the mayor or somebody would show their T-shirt, and, and Mark will, there we go. So, these T-shirts were made, they were very popular during the All America City celebration, the event that took place, all the participants who were involved in it, they all wore a blue version of this T-shirt. So, we had some gray ones made up with some nice material. They're available at the Welcome Center for $10 for anybody who would like to have them. We have plenty available. I know that several members of council have already purchased their T-shirt for their friends and family. I, I got some for Christmas gifts. It may be too late for Christmas gifts, but Valentine's Day is coming up, so you could certainly do that. We're not trying to make any money on this. We just want to make sure that the whole community can celebrate the All America City win. In addition, at the Welcome Center, there are other items related to All America City that are left over from the, from the initial work that was put in. That includes a blue T-shirt for $8. The gray shirts are $10. The, there's a blue T-shirt for $8. There's some ball caps for $15, some cups for $3, and some masks for $5. All of the proceeds will be used for future All America City related events and potential applications in the future. Thank you, Mayor, for being our model this evening, but I wanted to make sure that people were aware that, and that is the Welcome Center off of the bypass on 29 near Dan Daniels and, and Anglers Park.
Is that the only place they can get these shirts? Where can they get them from?
I believe that is the only place unless I get a text in the next moment or two telling me otherwise.
Ken Lee?
Yeah, and Ken, as you said, and I just want to reiterate to folks or let them know that these shirts do come in youth sizes if you've got kids who want them. I went ahead and bought one, and as Ken said, they made great gifts. I gave one to my son as a Christmas gift, and, and he loved it. As a matter of fact, he, he was sporting it around. He said, "I got one before you did, Dad," which is true. He did. So, but yeah, it, it's a great thing for our city, so folks, go out to the Danville Welcome Center, and if I can, real quick, I want to give them a plug out there. I was out there the other day, and as you said, if they've got these items, they've got a lot of great things out there. The staff is tremendous, and so I just want to give a shout out to the folks working out there at the Danville Welcome Center. Lots of cool local stuff there, folks can go pick up. Thank you.
Dr. Miller?
Yeah, if you go out to the Welcome Center sometime, look at their sign-in sheet. It's amazing the number of people that stop from states all, all over the country and from foreign countries that come to the Welcome Center. Ken, I think we need these. If, if the Virginia Mispole League goes live next year and we don't do it virtual, I think we all, all the council members ought to show up with one of these shirts on so we can show it off to the other cities.
Absolutely.
Ken, anything else? Anything else?
I have nothing else this evening. Thanks, Mayor.
I have a question for them, too, ma'am. Yeah, could you just give the, the public a quick update on where, where we're going? You gave it to the council, but the traffic light on Southwick Intersection, the crosswalks, what, sort of, in what stage of planning or funding are they in?
So, I'm trying to recall off the top of my head. I did send an email out to council members related to those projects. The funding, I believe, is in place for the stoplight at the intersection of, of Updike Place where the Dollar General is and South Main Street or Highway 86. That, we have the funding. It takes a while to order, you might, it's a very large intersection, so the, you have to have specially made masked arms and all that kind of stuff, and, and you have to have it engineered properly, so it does take several months to order the appropriate materials to be able to install this, the traffic signal. But there will be a traffic signal hopefully sometime later this year in the next few months that will occur. If, off the top of my head, I believe they're looking at middle of the year for that. The crosswalks, my understanding is that they're identifying certain places where that makes sense to do that, usually at an intersection. There are some places that are mid-block, and, and if there's a certain unique circumstance related to a mid-block inter, crosswalk, for example, at Camilla Williams Park, they, they are open to doing that kind of thing, but they want to make sure they can do it in the safest way possible, so we always follow the, I've said this before, MUTCD guidelines. It's the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices. For anybody who wants to look it up on the internet, just type in MUTCD, and you can have hours and hours of enjoyment reading all about how you're supposed to install traffic signals and, and devices. But it, it, we want to make sure that we do that correctly because you, whenever there's a conflict between pedestrians and vehicles, we don't want that to be a negative consequence. We want to make sure it's as safe as possible, so we are looking at those and, and looking at trying to make the improvements where it's appropriate. I hope that answers your questions, but I-
Yeah, I just wanted to get the public appraised. We haven't forgotten it.
No, we, we've not forgotten it. Hopefully, anytime a concern is brought up to council, by, by the public or council, we let you know one way or another whether it can be done and what the timeline is going to be to get it done. So, it is a lengthy process for a traffic signal, but it is in process. The funding has been in place since, I believe, the current budget to pay for that traffic signal, and, and hopefully it'll be done this year.
And the crosswalks are in planning, because there's several places that we think would improve safety for our citizens.
Yes.
Thank you.
Deputy city manager.
Nothing this evening, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. City attorney?
Just want to wish everyone a happy new year.
Thank you, sir. City clerk?
Nothing, sir.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayo?
Quickly, Mayor, um, happy new year to each and every one of you. It's good to see you, and I hope that you had a great Christmas. But just piggyback on what we heard earlier today, and just, just thinking of Tommy and what you, Mrs. Thorpe meant to you, and just having that time to know Mrs. Thorpe and got to learn what she meant to Danville was just a blessing. So, I know she's going to be dearly missed. She's well-known not only in Danville but throughout the state, as far as throughout the world, and being the oldest member, or living citizen at that time, gives, is kudos for Danville itself. So, she's going to be dearly missed. And the Pearls Group that was up here, I had the opportunity to work for them, and to see the fact that they do good work with mental health service, Barry, Barry Martin and his group, they were very instrumental in the community, and so just to see them tonight was a good thing. And given a lot of prayers go out through the pandemic and what we're actually seeing within families, let's continue to pray for them because we're, we're seeing death so, so rapid, and I'm pretty sure each and every one of you and the ones that are listening know family members who are suffering through a loss, and some of it, just very little, but it could be non-COVID, but through the loss of 2020, going into 2021. Let's just continue to listen to our city officials, our governor, and we know we still got to tackle this situation, and so each and every one of you just, just, each one, reach one to ensure that we're wearing our mask, and we're just following the guidelines. And I want to definitely give a shout out to the family of Dennis Saunders, big redskin fan, I think I wore his colors tonight, and, but he was a dear, dear, dear friend to me, coaching ally, and he meant well and a lot to the, the city and even Pitt County, and he's touched so many young people, and just to meet him, and I'm pretty sure a lot of you have, he's, is just, his ways and, and the person he is just goes unnoticed. So, that's all I have there, there, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Miller?
Yeah, today alone, I saw two patients with COVID, and, and I had, had to send home a employee herself and was exposed to five family members with COVID, and they had put her on quarantine, so it is rampant right now in our community. The battle is not won, it's not even close. The hospital beds are overflowing, the, you know, we're just, you can't transfer patients, we're having trouble finding beds for patients who don't have COVID problems. We're in the, we're in the midst of it. It's as bad now as it's been, so again, we urge you, social distance, wash your hands and wash your hands and wash your hands, and, and wear your masks. Don't let up for a second. I've had one vaccine, and I want to tell you, I had no problem with it. People are afraid they're going to get a reaction, and nope, I had a little sore shoulder, that was it. I'm looking forward to the second one. When you get your chance, I'm, I'm still having trouble talking people into getting their vaccine. They said they don't know, they don't know, they don't know. When you get your chance, take it. If you don't take it, you, you won't get in the queue for the second one. And the only way we're going to defeat this is people, enough people get vaccinated. It'll take about 70% of the population to get vaccinated, so they and the other 30% will be protected. So, please, please, when you get a chance to get the vaccination, get it. There is a light at the end of the tunnel, the vaccine, you know, we, we hope that if we get enough people vaccinated and wear masks long enough, that eventually we can get back to doing the things we used to do with birthdays and funerals and, and parties and sports events, so please. And I think it's going to be a good year for Danville. We got through this last year, you know, considering the, the economics and what our city did, and I have to applaud the city and the finance, we, we've done very well. We, we've held our own, if not better, so this year, Ken, I think is going to be better. We're going to have a lot more new jobs coming in, so there's, there's light at the end of the tunnel, so hang in there. But right now, we got it, we're still in the battle, so keep doing what you've been doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Saunders?
Oh, thank you. Happy New Year to everyone. Also, with regards to the pandemic, it is really, really hitting, you know, close to home, and I guess for all of us. I've had eight personal friends of mine to pass away in the last five days, and there are at least seven more who are ill, and we're certainly praying for them. I also want to thank Mr. Bennett for coming tonight to recognize Mrs. DeShia Thorpe, a wonderful lady, very, very pleasant, beautiful lady, and we will certainly miss her. She was a neighbor, and I had the honor on occasion, he called me several years ago and asked me for a ride to the, the voting polls. I said, "Absolutely." And it was a gift for me to be asked to do that, and we saw her often. I never saw her when she wasn't smiling, so I say to Ms. Thorpe, her family, please know that we love you and that we also praying for you. And with regards to Dennis Saunders, and the list just goes on and on and on and on, touched so many people, so many young people, you know, in our area, in the county and in the city. And with regards to the city, city manager, deputy manager, thank you all very much for your leadership, our 1,100 employees and trying to keep them safe, as well as our city safe, posting signs literally all over the city, six feet apart, mask up, all over the city. So, thank you for that, for that awareness, and I know, and, and Dr., Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you for encouraging people to get the vaccine. I don't know when eligibility will come to me, but I'm looking forward to, to getting that, Mr. Mayor, and, and I, I appreciate Dr. Fauci and all others on, on television media taking the shot publicly to let people know that you can trust it, that it's safe to take, and I think that's good. And again, I appreciate our Vice Mayor reminding us, and I look forward to taking it myself when, when it comes around. And finally, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your leadership. We have had some real challenges these last 12 months, but you have been right there on top of every last one of them, so thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Councilman Saunders and I spoke about it, Dr. Miller, that when it's our turn, we are willing to show the citizens that we'll take our shots publicly to show them how safe it is. So, whenever it's our turn, Councilman Saunders and I agree that we're ready.
I think that's very important to show the public, the public officials are taking the vaccine.
Yeah, so whenever it's our turn, we're ready.
Yeah, I agree. I, I think I told Mark Aaron a while back that whenever my time comes, I'm, I'm happy to let everybody see me getting the shot. I, I look forward to when my time comes up to, to be able to get it. I, I want to just talk about one thing briefly tonight, and that is, I'm very pleased to, to say that neighborhood-oriented policing, neighborhood-oriented policing is a reality in Danville now. As of January 1st, it is now being implemented in our city, and what that means, and those who've been on council for a long time, well, certainly this will sound familiar to you because I, I've been pounding the table for this for eight-plus years, and I'm thankful that we have a police chief now who believes in it. But what it means is our city is now divided up into sectors, and each sector, you have the same officers in the same neighborhoods, week after week, working in those neighborhoods to build a level of trust, a level of respect between the officers and the residents in those areas of the city. It's been very successful in other places. For me personally, I lived in Richmond from 2007 to 2010. I saw it firsthand how crime, particularly violent crime, dropped dramatically when they implemented this. Doug Wilder was the mayor then, Chief Monroe was the police chief, and they had a lot of success with it. I didn't know him back then, but Scott Booth was working at the Richmond Police Department at that time, so he knows firsthand that it works, and so I'm glad to see this being implemented in our city. I think folks have already seen in the last year to two years what community policing in general means and how it works and how effective it's been. We just had, it was reported at the end of this past year, the lowest crime rate in Danville in 30 years, lowest crime rate in Danville in 30 years, violent crime down, crime across the board down. Community policing works. Community policing works, and now, so this is the next step in that evolution, so I'm very excited about this neighborhood-oriented policing. I want to thank Chief Booth and our entire Danville Police Department for all the work that they're doing. I'm very excited to see what this next step will bring. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Whittle?
Thank you. Just like to piggyback off of what everybody else has said and that I just wish everybody a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also want to say happy new year to everybody and send love and well wishes and good thoughts, and of, of good memories of Ms. Thorpe. What a legacy that is, man, 112 years old. I don't think I want to be around y'all that long. I'm sorry. I don't think I want to be around y'all that long, I'm sorry. Also, Dr. Miller, again, I mean, everybody's hitting at home runs tonight, man. Mayor Jones, Mayor Saunders, when you guys are lined up to get your shot, let me know. If I'm in that same area, I'll be more than happy to do it on film and show folks. I have a, well, you guys know that my wife works in the nursing field, and she's in the COVID hospital in Greensboro every single day, and I can't, just can't imagine what those women and men have to go through every day and what they see and what the folks that they have to deal with, and they have to talk to the families, and unfortunately, they have to talk to their families on the phone because the families are not allowed in to see them. It's just absolutely heartbreaking to me. It's, the numbers are on the rise, our community is getting pounded hard right now. So please, for the love of God, if you go out in public, if you don't believe in it yourself, don't do it for you, do it for everybody that's around you. This is very, very serious, and the only way we can get through this is by taking the precautions and doing what's told to us by the CDC, what's, taking your vaccine when it's available for you. I strongly encourage everyone, you, if you're alive right now, you know someone that's been affected by this in one way or another, whether they've lost a family member or a friend, or you have been affected by this. And it's, the only way we can get this under control is for people to follow the guidelines put out by the CDC, by our governor, by our city. Stand together six feet apart, what a wonderful initiative that is. And my hat's off to everyone, all of our employees in the city that helped put that initiative together. It's a beautiful thing. Well, another thing I want to remind folks of, I said it during my year-end summary, the three W's, and that's wash your hands often, wear a mask, and wait six feet apart. Please, if you do that, I think we'll be on the right track to get back where we need to be. In 2021, this is perception, y'all, 2021 is going to be the best year we have ever had. Put it in your mind, put it in your thoughts, apply to everything you do, make 2021 the best year you've ever had. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell.
I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and I don't want to be redundant, but so many have stated things tonight that is in my heart very, very deeply, that we must be aware of the dangerous time with the pandemic. I'm very impressed when I go on the stories and just see people in the community, mostly everybody I've seen are wearing a mask, that's really saying something, that you are concerned about yourself and concerned about your friend or neighbors in the community. I was one of Ms. Thorpe's neighbors, she was a special lady, we're going to miss her in our community, but we thank God for her life. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Happy New Year to everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Hood.
Yeah, I would like to start out by wishing the city a Happy New Year. I want to give my condolences to the Thorpe and Saunders family, and thankful for Focus Point Mental Health for bringing the Pearls Program to our city. A lot of things I think about over the past year, and just to give thanks to the citizens of Danville for staying resilient, staying in support of one another, and you're seeing more and more encouraging us to be more safe, safely distanced, masking, doing things that we need to do as a unit, as a city, as a conglomerate, and that's important. Two words that, oh, and also I want to give a thanks to our essential workers, definitely, our essential workers, our citizens, and citizens and small businesses around Danville that are staying, staying the course, that are able to stay the course, and hopefully for those who may have lost a business, consider coming back with the support of the citizens here of Danville because it's very important. Two words I want to end with for moving forward in 2021, and that's togetherness and gratitude. And Danville has shown a lot of that, and I project seeing a great year moving forward. I thank all the staff, the city workers, being under the leadership of our mayor, and just continue to have a great Happy New Year to the citizens of Danville.
You, when we hear, as the mayor, when I get calls, and people say they're coming to council to speak, a lot of times I don't know what they're going to speak about. And council, sometimes I sit here and I listen to the presenters and what they're presenting to us, and I was like, what a mighty community that we serve in. And tonight I was saying the same thing. The first proclamation I did was in reference to human trafficking of kids, sex trafficking of kids, and we don't think about things like that until it happens to our house. And so I'm sitting there, I was thinking about, as I was reading that, and how social media and how things are doing and affecting our kids, until it happens to our house, then we pay attention to it. And I was so thankful for that presentation. And then, right behind that, the group came and they talked about mental health, mental illness, and we don't think about that. We don't, we thinking that, and I tried to put the two of those together, when people are having mental health and they go on Facebook and different places and doing all these things, and I thought about what Councilman Saunders and Councilman Hood were saying about 2021, and why I'm so thankful. Buckner, you mentioned the three W's, I mentioned the three B's. Be encouraged, be kind, and be nice. It's that simple. I don't care what, just be encouraged and be nice. And I want to say to the city staff, City Manager, and I have not had a vacation, I want to thank the City Manager for spending the entire holiday season with me and Dr. Miller. But I'm, Ken, I appreciate you, Earl, thank you all so much. We have been really busy. Dr. Miller will tell you, we have been in retreats, we have been in conferences, we have been in phone calls. Councilman Saunders, I shared a nugget with the City Manager. I said, "When you call me," I go through enough, "I want to hear you smile first." Because we talk about three or four times a day, and sometimes when I see his number, I go, "Oh, Lord, what is this?" So we got a great, Ken, I appreciate you. I want to start the year telling you and the staff, the entire staff, if it's not Candice Clark, when Clark calls me, I get scared. So he said, "Can you take a, can you take a call?" No. But I just want to tell you all, the whole staff, I sincerely appreciate you all, I really do. Council members, thank you so much. We do have a great camaraderie. I thank you for your support. We don't complain, we don't whine, but people don't understand behind the scenes some of that stuff that we go through. Lord Jesus, Larry talked about prayer, if it wasn't for the power of prayer. So I thank you all. And to the citizens of our community, we appreciate you, we thank you. We thank you for those of you who sent us messages, those of you who encouraged us, those of you all who going to be wearing these wonderful Danville shirts. But I just wish, Tommy, I don't know if you heard what I heard tonight, Tommy, and you come to council meetings all the time, but you and I are going to be talking, and maybe we can pull some other people in because the city can't do everything. But one of the things I've noticed, Tommy, that we don't have telephone books anymore, or if we do have telephone books, people don't use telephone books anymore. There's a lot of information that comes to council, and Tommy gets a lot of calls, and Tommy called me, and I'll call Tommy, and we're trying to figure out how to help people. People come and help us, but we need something in, put that stuff in some kind of document where we can go to, because there's a lot of help in Danville. A couple of weeks ago, Mark and I, Mark Aaron and I, we were at Pass, and we got the dental, we got Dr. Miller, we got so many things in Danville, and people say there's nothing in Danville, there's a lot in Danville, but you got to think about all the things where it's at. So hopefully we can put together some sort of something, Tommy, get some people to work with us, because there's a lot of good stuff in Danville, and it's a lot, when I heard tonight, people who don't have Medicare, Medicaid, this service is free. We have free feeding programs, we have dental programs, we have all kinds of stuff in the community. Tommy and I was talking this week about daycare. There's a lot of stuff in our community, people just don't know about it. And so maybe we can get some people to work with us and try to put something together so people will know. There's help with people's utility bills, but people don't know that there's help for utility bills, and pride and everything else. So I just want to say to council, thank you all so much for all your support, because it, sometimes, I don't complain, I just keep it all in, I wear it, I don't say a word, I don't respond, I wear it, I go places, and Buckner people say it, and I just keep on smiling. But on the inside, a lot of it hurts sometimes because of the misinformation that people get. But when I come around and family, like Councilman Saunders said tonight, "Sir, you don't know what those words mean to me, they mean a lot," and I want to say thank you, they mean a lot, and I appreciate it. Lastly, and I'll tell you why I appreciate it, because we talked about Ms. Thorpe and we talked about Dennis. We had a leaders in training program, myself and others, years ago, and we were training young people to be leaders over at Bonner and Westwood and Gibson, and these young people were young, and this is a non-COVID-related incident. And I thank you for your words, because it's kind of tough to sit here tonight, one of my leaders in training, this was a non-COVID, I get a call early in the morning that Jamal Doan's C-Lo has passed away. It's non-COVID, just suddenly, sharp young man, leader in the community, 34 years young, and all of a sudden it hits me that this young man who was in our ILIT program, and many of y'all know his mother, Sharon Doan, served on the school board. And so I was with the family today, contacted the family, they're doing well as they could be. But once again, I would encourage everybody, please, be encouraged, be nice, be kind. I'm not going to tell you what to do, but that's what I'm going to do. And on that note, we are adjourned.